Welcome to our December Board Meeting. We're gonna do things a little bit different tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So, I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. So before we actually start our meeting, go through our pledges and our prayer, we're gonna, we're gonna have some fun. We're gonna bring some kids in, we're gonna hear a little singing, then we're gonna bring some, some older kids in. So if y'all be patient with us, we're gonna start the festivities right now.
(applause)
Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells ring, jingle bells ring. Snowing and blowing, monkey shoes and fun. Now the jingle hop has begun. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells chime, jingle bells ring. Dancing and dancing, jingle bells swing. In the frosty air. What a bright time, it's a bright time to rock the night away. Jingle bells are turning, it's a bright time to go and ride in a one horse sleigh. Get up, jingle horse, pick up your feet. Jingle around the clock. Make a stand, jingle, jingle, jingle your feet. That's a jingle bell rock. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells chime, jingle bells ring. Dancing and dancing, jingle bells swing. In the frosty air. What a bright time, it's a bright time to rock the night away. Jingle bells are turning, it's a bright time to go and ride in a one horse sleigh. Get up, jingle horse, pick up your feet. Jingle around the clock. Make a stand, jingle, jingle, jingle your feet. That's a jingle bell, that's a jingle bell, that's a jingle bell rock. (applause)
We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good times, big dreams, to give you everything you could. Good memories, happy good days, good memories. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some. Go bring your stuff out here. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. (applause)
Let's say thank you, our first from Lost Pines. Thank you, that was great. Folks, stick around, we're gonna be entertained as soon as the kids get out by our choir from Cedar Creek High School.
(singing) Oh my heart, this night rejoices. As I hear, for me dear, sweetest angel voices. Christ is born, their choirs are singing. Till the air everywhere, now with joy is ringing.
(applause)
Sorry, yeah, I probably should've said something. Thank you guys so much for having us come out. So we're doing three selections for you. That was "All My Heart This Night Rejoices," and then we have "Amid the Falling Snow," and then we'll finish up with my personal favorite, "The Twelve Days of Christmas."
(singing) Oh, I remember sleepless nights. When we would be by candlelight. And our angel angels playing outside. When we were clean up slow. A million stars that touched the ground. Some left heavy secrets to hide. "Amid the Falling Snow." Maybe I'm falling down. Tell me, should I touch the ground? Maybe I don't make a sound. In the darkness all around. All around. I close my window to the light. I leave a smile, tears a wipe. And all is lit by candlelight. "Amid the Falling Snow." And all is lit by candlelight. "Amid the Falling Snow." (singing) Da da da, 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 da,[236.39]
Being a child with behavior to a child being adopted in my life. I, in my life, I've realized that it is hard to believe in fairy tales and bad things do happen. But I am a child of perseverance. I have overcame my behavior and believing in myself and giving everything my best shot. I no longer had to take medication and know, and now make the grades and choices I should. A couple of years ago, me, my sisters, and my brothers were placed in separate homes by CPS. I was placed with my grandmother who I had been get, living with for awhile. I was scared they were going to take me away from her as well as my mom. I had to stay positive and remain focused that everything would work out. I kept my grades up, kept in contact with my sisters and brothers, and loved my mom as much as I should. I kinda just went with the flow and never gave up on believing that everything would work out. I understand that setting goals and not being negative and having lots and lots and lots of patience is important to have perseverance. So to me perseverance is overcoming the impossible. Thank you.
Serenity, that was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Serenity. That was awesome. And she brings candy canes.
Oh, thank you, Serenity. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Serenity.
Serenity, I don't, I know how, you know how lucky you are to have a relationship with Ms. Betty there. Uh, I had the opportunity to work with her for several years, now they lost Pines, and she has a big heart, and she really cares, and she's very effective, not only on the clock, but off the clock and on the weekends, and she has a lot of love for you. So, proud of you.
Yeah, I'll do that real quick. Yeah, that's fine. You don't mind. I'll do it. Okay. Start with our special presentations. You know, each, uh, each year, and I say this each year, and I want to say it again, you know, we, we have a special month for recognition for the folks that I have the honor of, uh, being up here tonight with, and every month, uh, as our Board of Trustees, um, the ultimate volunteers, uh, and as, even though they're elected, they volunteer their time away from their families and, um, and do great work for the kids. Kids like Serenity, the kids that were singing tonight from the two schools, and then our other 10,000 students in Bastrof ISD, and that's our Board of Trustees. In January next month, when we come back for the January Board meeting, we're gonna have a big celebration, as we do each year, for, uh, Board Recognition Month in the state of Texas. But we have a proclamation, uh, relative to that, and we've asked Judge Poppy, Paul Poppy, to come help us with that proclamation. Welcome, Judge.
Thank you, Steve. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and that's a tough act to follow. So, uh, it, it is entirely appropriate for a community to honor, uh, our school board members. Uh, we've shown again here tonight that education is more than just book learning, although that's a big part of it. It's, uh, inspiring kids to want to learn and to have intellectual curiosity. It's, uh, giving them an opportunity to learn to work together, whether it be to sing a song together or to play a football game together, whatever the, uh, opportunity. So, education, particularly public education, is, has, has a tremendous challenge, and that is with limited resources to, uh, provide for every student in our population a quality education and the opportunity to learn and the challenge to learn. I couldn't be prouder of this school board and the other school boards in Bastrop County. It's entirely appropriate for us to have a, a month to say thank you to our school board members, uh, for your service, for your dedication, for the way you carefully manage the affairs of the school district, and, uh, support your administrators, and somehow through your example inspire these kids to be good students and good citizens. I can't tell you how often, uh, in my job, we talk about people who play well with others. People who get along well, who know how to cooperate, who know how to work in a team. And I know that starts in our classrooms and in our, on our schoolyards, and in our, uh, sports and extracurricular activities. So you're doing the work of the community. In a sense, public education is the lifeblood of a community. Without you, we wouldn't have a future. And it's a great challenge, and I personally am very thankful for the work that you do. I'm proud to sign this proclamation. I hope that it will be published for all the citizens of Bastrop County to see, so that they will know how much we appreciate the work you do. God bless you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Judge Poppy, before you, uh, before you exit the building, on behalf of the board, we just, uh, we've been there with you through, um, through your, through your terms as our county judge, and I, I know when you took your oath, they didn't tell you anything about fires and floods. But I do want to tell you that the leadership that you've shown over the past few months makes this school district very, very proud. So we want to say thank you for what you do to give back to us, and it's a great partnership between the county and the district, and we want to thank you for that. Thanks, James. Uh, real quick, before we go, we have some great recognition for a lot of wonderful things that have been going on, on the field, and then also some academic prowess amongst our athletes that you, I know you're gonna wanna witness. But before that, we haven't had a chance to do this, I want to introduce a newest member, our, our cabinet, our lead administrative team. Um, we're just so thrilled to have on our team Mr. Jeff Yarborough. He is the, uh, new, uh, Chief of Operations and Chief of Police for Bastrop ISD. Jeff?
Coach Jones, you ready?
We're kinda out of the order here, only because I have a dad who has a young daughter who's performing, uh, next door, and he said that he would be divorced if I didn't allow him to go first. He, he is a cross-country coach, so he said he could sprint down there. We'll, we'll start with our, our cross-country teams and, and get them with our academic all-state. And we have, we have the Bastrop and Cedar Creek, uh, academic all-state. To qualify for academic all-state, you have to have a 92 average, okay? And you've had to keep this average for all four years through, through your, uh, end of your junior year. And it's really, when you think about the things that they're involved in, and for them to do this, and, uh, from Bastrop, right now we have Eric Singelman. Eric, raise your hand. Eric was a first-teamer, okay? Eric, what was your GPA?
Uh, not sure.
Really high.
Only the guys that have high GPAs know. I can tell you mine right off the bat, you know, so. Okay? And we have Javier Perez. Javier was honorable mention. We also had Haley Hockinson, and, uh, Brian Lemel, and, uh, Michelle Veenwright, who weren't able to make it with us, but those are, we had five from, uh, Bastrop High School, and that's, that's outstanding. From, uh, from Cedar Creek High School, okay? We have, uh, Ariel Arzamande, right, Coach? I was close enough, right? Second, he was second team. Alex Breonis was second team. Chris, Christian Grimaldo was, was second team. I guess the guys didn't, couldn't make it, they, they were, they were all riding together. You have to hear this story, and the guy that was driving wasn't able to drive today, so they, they weren't able to hear. Nelly Rodriguez? Nelly was second team. Nelly, you know your GPA?
Above 4.0.
Yeah, above 4.0. Okay. All right, add all four of my years together. Okay? And Brianna Rogers. Brianna was also, Brianna, what was yours?
Same.
Same? Yeah. Did I study partners? Yeah. These are, so we had, we had, uh, five from each high school, and really a neat deal, and like I said, you know, a month ago, I got to watch all of them run. And this is a, a compliment to Steve and you, and, and Coach Newton, you guys have done a great job, and, uh, and these kids are not only great athletes, but they're great students too, and, and great leaders within our building. Thank you very much.
Outstanding.
Coach Langham, this is the Cedar Creek volleyball team. Coach had, uh, uh, four academic all-staters. Shannon Klaus. Shannon? Okay, Shannon was second team for us. Laura Lee Mellonbrook.
Laura Lie.
Laura Lie. Laura, I'm sorry, that's Laura Lie Mellonbrook. Okay? Uh, I practiced all these the whole time too, by the way. Okay? Mandy Posweng, okay? All right? Was second team, and then Brittany Helford was honorable mention. And again, Coach, Coach had four of them. Uh, academic all-district, I, I think I saw a list, you had a lot more. Ten, ten kiddos that were academic all-district. And, uh, obviously it makes your job, it makes your job as a coach so much easier when, when you're not running around making sure your kids are gonna be passing. These kids do a great job, and, and again, we're very, very proud of them, and, and what Coach Langham and his, his staff has done, besides doing great on the court, they've done great in the classroom. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Then we have the, uh, Bears volleyball team. Coach Creek had a, a, uh, child emergency, but today we have, uh, Alyssa Gonzalez. Alyssa? There you go. All right? Alexis Gonzalez, all right? Uh, Michaela Gertz, Haley McKnight, and Zoe Zamora. And these, these young ladies, as well as, and I think Coach Creek sent out an email today listing, uh, their, their accomplishments, and then another six or eight academic all-district, uh, young ladies that, that, uh, went on and did a great job in the classroom as well as, as on the court.
I think I heard, I think I saw on the, on the, uh, email today that their entire varsity squad was academic all-district.
Yes, their entire varsity squad. That, and, and to be perfectly honest, so was Coach Lamens. I mean, when you have 10, that pretty much, that much gets everybody. And, uh, that's something that, that we can be proud of. I mean, it really is that, that, uh, we're coaching to change lives, we're not coaching just to win games. And I think that, that our coaches and our kids really see how serious this is, and it makes it easy for them to be recruited when they have the grades that they have right here. So once again, thank you, ladies.
Congratulations.
All right? We'll bring in the Cedar Creek football team, and we'll honor them and their academic all-states together.
All right, guys. Come on, Jacob, come on down.
There you go. Coach Edwards kinda gave me a little, uh, shortened narrative. The Cedar Creek Eagles football team made great strides toward program goals in 2015. With a four and six, four and three, it was four and six overall, four and three district record, they advanced to the state playoffs for the first time in school history. It's the first time that, that they had won, if I'm correct, Coach, more than, than one game, and it's the first time that they'd beaten somebody other than Lanier. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was exciting to see, and, and the, the kids were fired up. I guarantee you, when, when, it, it was just a neat atmosphere to be around them.
Bob, I've been in the business 34 years, and I coached varsity football for 11 years, among many other things, is one of the most exciting things that I've ever been a part of.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt.
Guys did a great job.
No doubt. The two teams that, that, uh, eliminated both Cedar Creek and Bastrop from the playoffs were both playing last week, and one of them is, is gonna play for a state championship this week. And so it, it, there was no shame in what, what they did. Uh, both teams were very competitive against both those teams, and, and it was exciting to see. Uh, they had 14 players selected to the 26-5-8 team. There were four first-team selections, six second-team selections, and six honorable mention. The Eagles had three players selected to the academic all-state, two were selected to the first team, and one was to the honorable mention. Okay? Eric Kiefer, is Eric here?
He's a basketball.
Eric's a basketball. He was a first-teamer. Cody Patterson, is Cody here? Cody was also first-team, and Travis Roberts?
Basketball.
Basketball was honorable mention. Okay? Academic all-district, Coach told me that he would have somewhere in the neighborhood of 14 to 15 players that, that would make academic all-district. And, and I can't tell you how hard that coaching staff worked with our kids on, on grades. When you're talking about 107 kids, if, you know, if all of a sudden 25 kids fail, that's devastating. And I would go in, and they had the kids on the board, and this kid has three zeros, five zeros, we're gonna get this, and, and, and it was impressive. And, and in the end, I think at six weeks, you lost one. Maybe one kid.
Hey, hey, Bob, before you finish with Cedar Creek, uh, squad and, and recognition, um, I know typically they give this to the guy who wins district. It's easy to give it to that guy. Coach of the Year should have been that guy back there, John Edwards.
No doubt, no doubt. And it's always interesting, all-district meetings, and if you haven't ever been involved in them, that they're, they're a mess. I mean, it's just a mess, because one coach will go, I'm gonna vote for this kid, because if I vote for this kid, then this kid who's really deserving won't get a vote, and maybe my kid will win. I mean, it's just crazy. I mean, it's like Donald Trump and, and, and somebody else trying to figure out how they're gonna win Iowa. And, you know, it's, it's nuts.
I was wondering where you're going with that.
Yeah. Well, I, I caught myself. I felt, I felt Edwards going. Like this.
You got the hook?
You know, I went, I haven't messed up one time on Cedar Creek tonight. Again, we want to honor them. They had a great season. Uh, Coach was talking about, uh, that, that it looks great for the future, the, the JV's and freshmen, and it's only gonna get better. And so we're excited about everything they've done. So again, Coach Edwards, thank you. Fellas, thank you for representing your community.
Guys, congratulations.
Hope you guys enjoyed those cookies I left in there.
Good-looking bunch.
Yeah. So our Bastrop Bears, we, uh...
Lie down, guys.
Yeah, move on down, there you go. We, uh, they had their, their, uh, uh, recognition banquet last night. Uh, Ms. McClure, Kelly, uh, Ashley, we got to see everybody there, Ashley had, uh...
The C-Cats was there as well.
I, I did say that, Kelly. And, uh, had, uh, the guy from Columbus. Who's his name?
Bo Shobel.
Bo Shobel, who was a Super Bowl champion, spoke, and it was really neat. And so he, he did a great job. Uh, the Bastrop Bears finished seven and four. They had back-to-back playoff appearances, two years in a row now. Um, they, again, they, the, the people that they lost to in the playoffs are, were, were still playing last week, and, and Cedar Park is playing for a state championship this year. The, the freshman team went seven, or nine and one, and the JV team went seven and three. And so the future's bright. The future is really bright. Uh, Coach, uh, Coach McGee, Coach Patman, all their coaches have done a great, great job. Let me talk about their academic kids. Brandon Batat. Brandon? First-team academic all-state, okay? Dane Baron? Dane here? Okay, Dane was honorable mention. Uh, John Good. John was, was also honorable mention. Luke Patterson was honorable mention. Uh, their trainers, I'm telling you, I think their trainers must do all of the, the, uh, the tutoring for the team, because they're phenomenal. Noah, uh, Gormley, Gorm, Gormley was, uh, elite academic all-state. There was one trainer in the state of Texas who was an elite academic all-state, and that was Noah. Okay? No other, no other kid in the state of Texas got on the elite team but Noah. Okay? Victoria Murray was first-team, and then, uh, Kenzie Adair and Andrew Venzin were both second-team. And so, once again, the things the way they do. When practice is over, Coach, Coach has teachers that come in and volunteer their time and set up tutorials for the players. After practice is over, it's almost like college, that's what it reminds me of. The kids go in, they go in and see different teachers, and they work with those teachers in the fieldhouse with, with their grades. Uh, it's, it's a great deal. I mean, they're doing it the right way, both schools, and, uh, I can't be more excited about what we have going. It's, it's really, like I said last week, or last month, every program at both high schools advanced to the playoffs. Okay? Now our goal is to be playing in December, where you guys have to cancel the board meeting 'cause we have to travel to Dallas or Houston and, and that type of thing, or we have to have a board meeting to approve those hotel rooms. Okay? Right, guys? Okay? All right? Once again, our Bastrop Bears and, and as well as their academic all-staters. Thank you.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Just, just real quick, uh, and I, I talked to Ms. McClure about this last night, just so you guys know, we hosted 10 playoff games. 10 playoff games in four weeks, and, uh, the most it's ever been hosted, we hosted the TAF state championships, they loved it, they want to come back, they had a great time. Everybody that came, uh, I, they can't talk enough about the stadium that, and, and the facilities we have. And we couldn't have done that without y'all, we couldn't have done it without GCA and, and communities and different restaurants within the, the city. Every meal we had, every meal we had at the stadium was donated. I went to them, they said, absolutely, Coach, no problem. And all they got in return was a thank you, and I got them a really nice plaque and a, and a certificate, but they donated every meal for, for our press box. And that's, that's phenomenal for our community, and that they go, whatever you need, you know? And some of them more than once. And so, uh, again, the stadium is, is being used and we're, we're keeping it going, and, uh, we're excited about it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Now we're gonna move on to our, uh, open forum. Um, we have one speaker tonight, it's gonna be Ms. Rebecca Bennett. And she's gonna talk a little bit about the results of the BFT survey of employee satisfaction.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Bennett, I represent the Bastrop Federation of Teachers, and tonight I'm presenting to you the results of our annual survey of employee satisfaction. Uh, just like always, it's quite lengthy, and I appreciate the time that you spend reading it. Uh, I think it can be very useful to you as you plan, uh, for the rest of the year. Um, there are, we have some district-wide results in the front, and then campus results later on, and at the back are the comments. Uh, I just want to point out that, um, BFT appreciates that the goal has, that the board has made as one of their goals to improve teacher workload. Uh, but you can see from the survey that teachers, uh, some teachers are feeling still a bit overwhelmed by paperwork, by pressures on their time, by the amount of time that they're spending, uh, away from their families in the evenings and on the weekends, trying to, um, make sure that quality instruction is delivered every day to their students. And, uh, the board ha, we, the board, the administration, the entire district still has work to do in this area. So I thank you very much, uh, for your time and this opportunity to present this information to you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move on to the superintendent's report and board discussions. Janie?
I just want to take a few minutes and provide the board with information about House Bill 2610. Um, it is, um, a new opportunity for schools in Texas under the 84th Texas Legislature to, um, have the opportunity to amend what's currently striking the language of a 180-day instructional year to 75,600 minutes. And that goes into effect this year. As you know, we approved our calendar last year in February, so it was voted on this summer, so we had the opportunity to look into some adjustments for this year. And so at the District Educational Improvement Committee, we have presented this information to them, and we are gathering, in fact, finding to put some, um, information as far as is the opportunity, and do we want to take the opportunity this year to make some adjustments? And then we will take that to Mr. Murray's executive counsel, that information. As we approach next year, the main thing I want to be able to provide you with is that when we bring the calendar to you in February, it will look different than it has looked before. And so we are going to really take advantage of the 75,600 minutes and try to build in the opportunity on a regular basis for our professionals to have the professional development opportunities that people in the private world have, and ongoing throughout the school year sustain the opportunity to grow and provide teachers with PD. So that's all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer, um, but we just wanted to get it out so you know when we start having these conversations in January and teachers start asking and clarifying that you were informed as a board with that information.
Thank you, Janie.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Janie. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. If any board member wants to pull anything off the consent agenda, we can do so at this point. If not, I want to entertain a motion, uh, to move forward and approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, uh, A, B, C, D, and E. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to our one action item tonight, uh, Mr. Barry Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, members of the board. Uh, local government code provides that the board must designate a records manager, and this person is responsible for the destruction, the maintenance, the management of all the records. We have a resolution in your board packet that meets this requirement, and the, uh, administration is recommending that we designate our, um, Director of Community Relations and Community, um, Services to be that person. So we recommend that we approve the Director of Communication and Community Services to serve as our records manager.
I thought it wasn't gonna be you for that.
Yeah, no, I had to think that title quick, 'cause it was sliding back over this way. No. In all sincerity, we do recommend that we, uh, the position be named Executive Director of Communications and Community Services, our records manager.
So move.
I second.
The move and seconded, uh, to approve the resolution designated as Records Management Officer, you're gonna have to help me, Barry, on that motion.
All right. Um, administration recommends that the board approve the resolution designating the Executive Director of Communication and Community Services to serve as a Records Management Officer for Bastrop ISD.
So we'll approve that as presented. Is there any, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Can you get, can you get all that on one name tag?
And everything else.
Acronym, yeah.
Her policy and requirements, um, I do have to read, um, the training that the board, uh, has to do year-to-date. James Allen, place one has met his requirements. Kelly C-Cats, place two has met her requirements. Billy Moore, place three has met his requirements. Molly McClure, place four has met her requirements. Glenn Peterson has not met his requirements, but I'll tell you real quick, Glenn has until February, and Glenn's commitment is pretty unbelievable. Glenn was in New York yesterday with his boys, and he's at a board meeting tonight, so we all know who he follows, and he holds down a job and the whole bit. So, um, Glenn's gonna get his hours in.
We'll get there.
There's no question about that, and he has until February to do that. Uh, Dr. Matthew Mix has met his requirements, and also Ashley Munchenick has met his requirements. Um, that is actually all I have, and, and before we adjourn, I just, uh, some of the principals that are in here and some of the administrators, we want, on behalf of the board, we wanna, I know you got a few days left, and I know you're all counting them down until Sean Adams says three. So, she's, uh, she's keeping track of that pretty good, but we want you to go back and, and tell your teams and your, your staff tomorrow, we want them to enjoy their, their, their time off, because we know it's much needed. Um, and a lot of you administrators, your time is much needed, so go enjoy, uh, your couple of weeks and have, have a great Christmas, Happy New Year, and, uh, be ready to roll in January, we'll get back after it. Uh, if not, we will, uh, adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moving and seconded to adjourn. Y'all have a merry, merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And New Year's Eve, we're picking us a high.
Are you?
Oh, I am.
Okay.